And we'll do the Texas pledge first and then we'll do the state. Texas pledge, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of our nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom we give thanks. Okay, I'll leave this in prayer. Thank you Father for keeping us safe and gathering us here today. I pray that you lead us and guide us, Lord, in all your wisdom. Help us to make decisions that are best for the community as a whole. And just let your glory be known to all. And we praise you in Jesus' name, amen. This is the opportunity for the public to address council. Dialogue, deliberation, or discussion with council members on items that are not on the agenda is prohibited by law. Time for each speaker is limited to five minutes. If anyone would like to address the council, they can do so at this time. Okay, moving on to business. City council may discuss, consider, and take action to accept the resignation of council member Joe Smith, a single-member district number one. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the resignation of council member Joe Smith as single-member district.
I'll say it, Pat.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, we were supposed to have executive session, but we have been advised by council to have this an open session. So council will discuss, consider, and take action to officially open the swimming pool for the summer and discuss rate of pool for pool managers, CDO, and the lifeguards. And here to discuss that is Janet Wilson and Sam Mallory.
Okay, first of all, I'm really excited to do this again. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it worked out that all my camps got stapled and so, you know, things kind of changed real quick for us last week. So anyhow, I'm glad to be here, I enjoyed it when I did it before.
We appreciate you doing that.
So the rates that I put on here, I really don't know what the kids made last year. I don't have those rates in front of me.
Do you want to say it?
Sure. I do know they all started. They all started at $10 when they were initially hired, whether that was under me or last year. So I guess that was five years ago. This is the fifth summer since I started doing all this. And the thought that the council at the time was going up by 25 cents per year, trying to encourage them to come back, and the process on that was because it was not running smoothly and we weren't getting good lifeguards wanting the job. And so they were trying to find ways to get people coming back every year and encouraging that. So I do feel like that's been helpful. The only one that, looking at last year's, it looks like Clarice stayed at $10 instead of getting a raise last year. Because that was her, this is her third summer to guard. And so if that policy had stayed in place, she should have been at $10.25 last year. I don't know, like I said, I don't know why Mike Kinley and Richard and Damian all went up to $10.50. And so I'm not sure why Clarice didn't get a raise last year. I mean, I wouldn't be here for that, so that's just something in the past. But what I put together is according to their year's experience, starting at 10 and going up a quarter a year. So that's what I put on my proposed here. It looks like it follows according to that 25 cent raise with everyone except for Clarice. And I put her at $10.50 because this is her third year. So that would get her a 50 cent raise according to this from last year. Rochelle made $13 last year. I put her at $13.50 simply because it's a manager raise, not a student lifeguard raise. Obviously, that's up to y'all if you want to do a raise at all on the management position or not. And I do not know how both managers were handled, obviously, last year. When I was manager, the entire summer I started the, I started getting paid the second pay cycle of May and I was paid through the first pay cycle of August. That was the opening and closing, getting off guard certified, getting cleaned, all that business. And it was a total of $8,000 just split equally across all those paid periods. Now, obviously, we're starting late. So what I was, I mean, I've been clocking an hourly, the three days that I've been down there and, you know, just so that there was some hours registered. I don't know if I want to go hourly, if you want to do. What that $8,000 came out to is $14.45 per paid period. It was $8,000 for the full middle of May to middle of August. No, that's when I was manager last month. And it was just. Oh, okay. Yeah, and I did not know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what y'all paid last year. I think they were both hourly, right?
Yes.
It wasn't a salary position. So I don't, to me, that's something y'all will have to decide, how do you want to handle the head manager position? If you want to be a salary hour. Well, I mean. I know when I was managing, I had all the concessions, all the scheduling. It was not just onsite pool hours, you know. I do know last year that the scheduling and concessions and all that stuff was handled up here by Melissa and Debbie. And so the managers last year didn't have all of, you know, what it originally had been. So, I mean, I think if we want to go hourly, I probably should have paid more than what I'm paying the assistant manager because I'm going to be doing, and ultimately, the buck stops. But I mean, I have to deal with anything that comes up the line. Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes. And she will do a couple of days of management as well as like the NHMR things and some of those that we really need to have someone onsite for team night, that kind of stuff. And then she will also fill in where, like, say, we've got a lot of kids out for athletic camps or things like that. And she'll step into that spot as the next lifeguard. You know, she'll be the person I call on to fill in those spots too, so.
I have multiple questions.
Sure.
So you will be there, I mean, there's not going to be any taproom, you're going to be all going to do schoolwork or whatever during this period of time.
No, no. And I actually, because that was one of my concerns, looking at this when, you know, you and I talked a week ago. We don't have an official start date for school yet. I mean, I've heard rumors that it's moved into tenth of August, but we don't have it officially yet. The schedule, as far as band is concerned, is not 100% set because we don't know what the rules from CDC are going to be. Right now, they are so tight that it really is just not even feasible for me not to try to get it to all seven of the kids how they have it set. So in June, I'm not doing any band stuff at all. Once they relax those just a little bit, hopefully. In July, there may be some evening things that I do, but not during the normal pool hours. Now, when we get finalized on when the school's going to start and that kind of thing, then I have to work around what they say, I have to be up there, you know, and we kind of have to cross that bridge when we get there. Because Rochelle and I are both school employees. And so it may be that, like, if we're in in-service, say we start the tenth and if they put us in in-service the week before, then we've got four kids that have had four years of experience. It may be that we need to put them in charge, you know, give each of them a day that they're managing for the couple of hours before we show them I can get there after our school stuff is done. And that's what we did in the past. I mean, because we've always kept it open through our teacher in-service and then when school actually started, closed it, is what we did. Because then all the lifeguards are really, I mean, they're busy till seven o'clock in the night at athletics, so.
But all the lifeguards indeed are over 18, 18-year-old?
No.
In that case, they can't be in charge?
Well, the four that have been here four years, yes.
If they're 18-year-old?
Yeah, the four that have been here for four years are 18. All four of them are. But they're, but the rest of the guards are not 18 years or older, yeah. I'd say if we, if we, if y'all would like to move me to hourly, I would like that to be more than what Rochelle is making because I, you know, ultimately have the final plus I'm doing all the scheduling and that kind of stuff. And that just takes time.
Can you tell me, like, can you guesstimate what your average hours are in a week's time?
I added up everything the other day and I think it's going to kind of out to pretty close to 40 hours a week for each of us. It was, it was right at 90 hours total is what it can seem to be doing, so right around 40 hours. And we might not always hit that, you know, it just depends on what parties are happening and that kind of stuff. Sometimes it'll be close to 80, sometimes closer to 90.
So if you're hourly, what would you want? So you've got Rochelle at $13.50.
Yeah, I'm going to turn at $13.50 if that's okay with y'all. And then.
$14.50?
I can do that. I don't know if that would come out to, if I could, I would do that.
Oh, the only thing that would. Overtime. Last year was terrific. And there was no reason for it. A lot of, a lot of stuff, just business of it. But the both of them, just both the lifeguard, the manager, the other side.
I mean, there's, I've never had a year that there wasn't a significant amount of overtime. And not for every kid. But say you've got, you've got a list of 12 kids. Well, if four of them are gone one week and you only have eight employees, then probably most of those are going to hit overtime in a week simply because they're having to work from, if the pool opens at 12, that means they're on-site at 11:30. And if we run parties till 10 o'clock, they'll leave site till 10:30. So you're talking 11 hours a day, you know what I mean? And I mean, you can't put just three guards out there just to keep your hour, you know what I mean?
So there will be some expected overtime.
Yeah, there are always.
Crazy as last year.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I've always had kids, now, we didn't pay them extra. I mean, we didn't pay them extra. But I also think that's why they didn't find a salary and not hourly. Because then it didn't matter, if I put in 70 hours in a week, y'all are still paying the exact same amount. You know what I'm saying? I mean, there just is times that overtime happens because of your guard availability. Like, for instance, right now, on this list, we've got one, two, three, four, we've got five that are not in athletics because they're college kids. All the others have athletic workouts and they're not available till noon. And so that means that those five are going to have to be the opening shift because those athletes need to go home. You know, and sometimes the guys can get there earlier because their workouts are earlier than the girls. But you got to get them home and get them fed and, you know, rehydrated and things like that before they go sit on stand. So it just kind of, you know, to take a kid and we've got a pair of siblings on here, their whole, if their family goes on vacation, somebody's got to pick up that slack. And so that's where your overtime shows up in a computer. Did y'all pay extra for overtime? See, we never paid extra for the overtime.
So it was still just the same.
Probably great.
Oh, okay, well, that's probably different.
We never did, we just, we kept it, I turned in how many hours they worked and they got whatever their rate was for that hour.
Yeah, that's a big difference. And that would definitely put a lot of control.
Oh, yeah, no, they never did time and half. We just kept it, whatever their rate is, is what they got. It didn't matter if they worked two hours a week or if they worked 50, they got their rate.
There's a lot of difference.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to be aware of all this and kind of keep your eye on overtime.
And I'm very happy, like, if y'all see, you know, after that first cycle, that there's a lot of overtime, I'll come up and just kind of explain why it happened so that when people ask you, you know what I mean, you understand why it's there. So I don't mind answering questions if they're going to do that. So, well, I did put this packet in there to be printed, but there's 400 packets ahead of me from something they printed. So they'll print out probably, you know, tomorrow. So when I originally put this together, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine kids that are certified. And then Joe Marcus Carrero, I guess he turned this in today. More Morales, actually, I guess it's his, I think he changed Morales legally. He came in last week, I think he got this and turned it in today. He would be an excellent kid to add to this list that would put us at 10 guards. I'm used to having closer than 12 because there's always going to be one or two that by the middle of the summer, they're like, I can work two hours this week. You know what I mean? And so I know 12 guards sounds like a lot of people. But when you start figuring it out and kids are gone for their vacations and things, it really does settle things and doesn't put us in a position where we have to consider closing or things like that. And so, so Joe Marcus, I'd like to go ahead and add on, he would make number 10. He is getting certified. He's already planning to get certified, however, I told him that after we finished this meeting, I'd let him know. You know, I don't want to spend the money if he's not going to be able to work. And then I had two others contact me, Jillian Hoffman is one of them and Trey Machek is one of them. Neither of those are certified guards, they would be new kids starting. Jillian's only 15 and I know in the past, City Ballinger's only wanted to hire kids that were 16 and altered. I don't know what y'all's preference, Red Cross will certify them at 15, but City Ballinger has never wanted to hire at 15, they've wanted to wait until they were 16. So that's kind of up to y'all. Trey Machek is 16. I'd say it would be beneficial to go ahead and get him certified because these four that have been going four years, there's not a high probability they'll be back in fifth year just because they're getting close to going to college and that kind of thing. So I wouldn't mind getting Trey on because he'll, his older brother and sister both guard it. I think he'll guard, you know, for three or four years, I think he'll be a long-term guard for us.
I guess the only, trying to help, I have a question about 15, would that suit, we have any common interest question there?
So she, I know she just finished her freshman year and, I mean, I know she's a good kid, but I just don't feel comfortable making that decision. And I told her and her mom that we'd have to wait and talk about it at council, find out what our city's. And I don't know if that was something written in.
I'm sorry, when's her birthday? How close is she to 16?
She will not be 16 till January.
Okay, I thought if it was going to be this summer.
Yeah, she won't be 16 until January. And like I said, I don't know if that's something that's written into our city rules or whatever or if it's just the preference of, you know what I mean? And I don't know where to look to find that answer.
Would that be in the labor laws?
I don't think.
Not in the state of Texas, you can't be 16.
Sam, do you know anything about the face?
For? Well, if Red Cross is going to certify them at 15, that was my concern. If Red Cross is going to certify you at 15, but they can't get a job anymore till they're 16, that doesn't make sense totally across the board. I mean, something's got to be in there, whether it's a 10 quarter, it's a season on, or something like that. I don't know. That might be a bad question for sure. He deals with it at the rabid code as well.
And I, you know, I really don't know, because I haven't done this anywhere because I don't, I just know that that's, when I took the job the first time, they said, we do not hire under 16.
I think there's probably a reason for that somewhere.
I figured there is. So is that something that y'all want to check on before I give her an answer?
My thought on it would be a no, since she's not 16 yet. I don't know what anybody else. Yeah. I mean, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, I think she'll be a good guard, she's a responsible kid, but it may just be, we'll just tell her, you know.
Next year.
Next year, if she turns 16 in January, if she'll certify and get that application, you know. So I think that would be a wise decision, personally. I do like that when they're 16, they can get themselves to a firm work. And it's not, my mom wouldn't, blah, blah, blah. Awesome to get that job, so.
That probably has a lot to do.
You need to be here. You know, or you need to build up to make some calls and get yourself there, so.
And I guess, staying right there for a minute, I don't have a problem with 12 lifeguards.
No.
No, I don't. I mean, I figure it doesn't matter how many you have. You need what you need and you're going to work who you can work.
Well, and y'all will see that as soon as we open, unless because of the COVID things, it's different. Generally, the month of June is huge, like 150 or 100, 150 every day. As soon as we hit July, it goes down to 75 a day. And as soon as we hit the third week of July, it goes down to about 50 a day. And then you end up with some Sundays, you only end up with about 15 or 20 in the pool house, I mean, even coming in the door. So you're going to see that there's going to be heavier hours scheduled because there's more people in the pool, so you're going to have more people on staff. I also try to look at weather when it's over 100 degrees. I try to schedule more so that they're not in that 100-degree temperatures quite as long just to keep the kids healthy, you know. It just, that's kind of how I've managed that in the past, so.
Just like I said, still maybe a question for Pat. Do you either know or investigate, but according to the national labor laws, as long as the job's not oppressive, there's a range between 14, 15, and 16. The 14 and 15 being that it cannot be oppressive, in other words, this is established back in 1938 when people were hiring kids, but they would be engaged to work, but they were hiring under conditions that were dangerous or that too much of a burden on them, so. And I said that, still maybe a question for Pat to ask, to answer.
And I know there's not a lot of difference in 15 to 16, but mentally and emotionally, they grow up a lot between as they start to get their licenses and that kind of thing. Lifeguard is really easy until you have to actually jump in and say to someone. And then it's terrifying, you know. And so you definitely want to make sure that they're ready for that, so that. Okay, any other questions on payday stuff? And I'll just leave this whole packet with you so that y'all have it in case those don't ever print. As far as hours of operation, last year, my understanding is that it was open seven days a week and that they did some morning parties all the way through, sometimes to 10 o'clock, you know, closing at 10 o'clock from parties. Prior to last year, we used Mondays as our cleaning day. I did that straight off of what Janeway did, Janeway did her whole 600 years, which she ran the pool, you know. She had a pretty good model going and.
She wouldn't tell you that either, would she?
No. And I, you know, during college, all my, that's how I ended up in Ballinger's, all my friends were Ballinger kids. And so I'd come over with them and I'd sit behind that counter, I didn't even pay to dine, but I'd sit behind that counter with Jamie and work the concessions for her. Well, all my friends were lifeguards. And, you know, so I've learned quite a bit from her. She's such a funny, funny lady. So my proposal is that we go back to Mondays being our cleaning days. I don't think that the guard really had good time to clean last year. It takes a solid four to five hours weekly of getting to vacuum and sweep and scrub spots to keep the pool where it needs to be. We already scrubbed it and vacuumed it three times in the last four days. There was algae spots all over the bottom that they are using metal brushes to scrub on. And I do think that part of that is due to there was not a regular cleaning time last year. Because if we start parties at 10 o'clock in the morning, we're supposed to get there at 6 and vacuum, I don't know. That just didn't jive real well at least. So I also like to use those Mondays to do any meetings that I need to do with them to discuss problems we had the week before or big events we have coming up. If there's any training exercises that they need to do, all that happens on that designated time on Monday. And I think if you start going that way, that that's a problem. So that would be my suggestion is that we go back to that. I know also on Monday nights is when the city employee open swim had been taking place. I don't know if that still happened last year.
I just heard that it did not, but I would like to see that.
I mean, if I were open in the regular hours and in parties, that's why that city employee got canceled. I mean, because that means they were doing parties and stuff through that time. And so I think that is a nice thing to do for our city employees. The only concern that I ever always had with it was, there's not a guard there. They go in at their own, you know, leisure and they leave at their own leisure. The pool house is not open, just the pool itself, like coming from that side gate. There were a couple of times over the three years, and I mean, like, maybe three times total, that that gate did not get locked back. That concerns me just for safety of anybody else walking around the park, you know. And so I think, it doesn't bother me to do it as long as everybody knows that if you, if you go, you walk in, close that gate behind you, when you leave, it's your responsibility to lock it or else the, you know, it's on you if it's left open, you know. It always made me a little bit nervous, just wondering for lots of nights that I'd run down there at 11 o'clock and just make sure the gate was locked because it just could really turn into a really bad situation really quick.
Until Tuesday.
On Monday nights.
Would you recommend having one of your team members present during that time to make sure the lockup?
I mean.
And just for safety?
Safety-wise, yes, it makes sense to have somebody down there.
Just in case?
Yeah. You know, as long as there's not 25 people, one person can be technically onsite and that be valid. Really, there should be two so that if there is an emergency, you've got one dealing with the emergency and one calling for help or, you know, that kind of stuff. I mean, that's kind of up to y'all. We did it from 6 o'clock to whenever. I don't know if anyone in there passed at 11 o'clock without a lifeguard. Yeah, it was from, it passed. Yeah, and usually it's like, I mean, usually by 9 or 10 o'clock, they're based on home. And it's just, you know, it'll be a family that will come in for an hour and leave and then maybe somebody else comes in for hourly then, you know. You know, I went once or twice during that time just to see who would show up. And I mean, there was never more than eight or 10 people there at a time, lots of kids, so.
I personally, I personally would like to see at least one, two lifeguard there and then that would put us in a situation where they can unlock the gate and make a lock gate and let them know.
And if we, you know, if we made it, it's, you know, 8 times, I mean, 6 to 10 p.m., you know what I mean? And that, and that would take care of it, so. I know there also, off and on, there have been years that there have been water aerobics that would happen on the evenings before the city employee swim. I haven't had anyone contacting me about it this year. So I don't, I don't know if that's something that you guys want me to just handle if it comes up or, you know what I mean, and maybe give a call, if someone contacts me about it. I'm not interested in going out and searching for it, honestly, because there's usually only five or six people that come to do that, you know, the last time I was managing. And so, and the lady that ran it, they just paid her odd bucks or something to come do an hour of water aerobics, you know. Again, there was a lifeguard on-site for it. Um, again, there was a lifeguard on site for it. Um, and so I, I don't know what y'all's opinion on that is, or not.
How about you, Pat, look if it comes up? Okay?
Gotta work, work on it, but you know, if it doesn't come up, then.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
I'm good with that.
You know, if it does come up and it's only an hour, then you don't have that many.
They, yeah, and they did it from, they did it at five o'clock so that then it was open for city after that. So in that case, we could extend if we wanted lifeguards there, you know.
Put that at five o'clock there and hour and a half.
Yeah, just get them there.
One question would be, is that gonna interfere either way with y'all's team by starting that at five o'clock?
Should not, cause we start at nine A M. and we're usually done at the latest two o'clock. I mean, if, if there's a significant amount of work to do. And you're at the beginning of the season while we're still trying to deal with the pool bottom, there's just gonna be work to do. But it'll be there.
And do they pay to have access to the pool for that one?
They, that and the swim lessons have always been, I mean, this is going back to when, um, Amy Wade was doing swim lessons. Um, they've never paid, it was a surface facility, just let them use it in order to have. Um, we did consider it the first year that I was here because I didn't know that they couldn't pay. And so I accidentally screwed something up. Um, but there are, most facilities do charge for someone to come in and use their facility to teach lessons, you know.
But it's still getting paid.
Right, they're getting paid. Um, and I think, I mean, Amy did it forever. Um, the lady who's been having to do the lessons. Um, I don't ever contact, she contacts me and says, hey, can we still do lessons? And I say, let me talk to city council and, and that's just kinda how it works. Um.
I would think they would at least pay for the lifeguard that's on duty.
Well, that's the thing. Until two years ago, there was not a lifeguard on duty.
Yeah.
Um, and then starting two years ago, after we had kinda read through all the Red Cross stuff, it's not required, but it suggested that anytime there's patrons in the pool, no matter what the activity, you have someone, you know, there. Um, she does use the lifeguard staff as her assistants. Um, and she kinda teaches them how to teach. So they aren't even paid by her, but they are not in official city capacity during that time. Um, and so, I don't know. And, and I haven't been contacted about lessons yet either. Um, so I don't know, but I'm sure since word gets out that I'm running, I don't get contacted. I feel pretty confident about that. Um, and so that, you know, is probably something we need to, I, I think it would be challenging to tell someone who's been doing it for fifteen years approximately. All of a sudden, you're gonna have to start paying to, you know what I mean? Uh, I don't know. It's just challenging to do that when it's always been offered free, um, in our, in our community. I honestly am, am comfortable if she's using the lifeguard staff with her class of eight kids. I'm really very confident that that lifeguard is still doing the lifeguard job. She's obviously certified swimmer and swim coach, so it's not. I don't feel like they're in danger of being one-on-one. I mean, each, each person I've worked with or kids are working with, so. Um, I don't feel like it's an unintended swimmer situation. Um, but again, that's what I wanna make sure I talk to y'all about and see what you think. And that may be something you need to chew over a little bit and think about a couple of days. And then if I get contacted, then we can have a specific chat about that, you know. And I'm okay with that too. Okay, is that sounded?
There's a problem with this, we're just putting in your hands.
I know.
Making decisions and everything, but if you have questions, you can always ask.
Absolutely. Well, and I, I tend to over, I don't know if it's over. I like to be totally open with what my intentions are. Um, I think it's that way. You're clear when someone asks you a question, even if it's, you know, she talked about that, but I don't remember what it was. Let me call and ask again. You know what I mean? I, I like to leave y'all with as few, few questions as possible. Um, and so that kinda leads into the next thing is what hours do we wanna actually run it? Um, I think that twelve to six worked really well last year. That's opening an hour earlier than what we had done in the past. So I think I'd like to keep that, um, the twelve o'clock open time. Um, the second question that becomes, how important is the adult swim to our community? Um, when I first started, adult swim was in the mornings. Um, and it was open from eight till we opened for regular hours. We'd see maybe two people a day. It was pointless and I had to pay two bucks to be there before I had to sit around and stuff, you know. So the last two years, we, you know, the last year that I was in charge, we changed it and we did adult swim from six to seven. Um, so as soon as normal hours closed, and we only did one party from seven to nine at night. Um, last year, I think they kinda did some of both. If they couldn't fill up two parties from six to eight and eight to ten, then they put a party at seven to nine and did the adult swim six to seven. So I don't think it was a real normal schedule. It was kinda whatever worked. Um, I'd kinda like to land on one or the other. And either we're doing two parties, six to eight and eight to ten, or we're doing adult swim six to seven, one party at seven to nine.
One or both.
Which one makes the most sense?
I mean. We still, I asked Rochelle how many adults they saw last year and she said they only saw maybe two or three people during our adult swim hour.
And they can still swim at any time.
Oh, yeah. It would just be driving.
So we're not taking it away from them.
It's not completely away, no. It's just they have to deal with kids, you know, you know. Um. The thing that I did not like about it, honestly, I liked having it open for adult swim. I think it is an important thing if people utilize it. What I did not like is, um, so say I've got guards there till six o'clock, they do their normal closing duties. Well, if there's nobody swimming, what am I supposed to do till the party starts at seven? And then you start getting phone calls, well, how come we saw eight guards sitting around doing nothing? You know, and I, I don't like to hit those kinda phone calls. I want it to be obvious they're working. Um, I, I schedule in a, a break as they come off of the stand. They get a little bit of downtime before they go into concession work or cleaning work, that kinda stuff. But, um, that was my biggest thing is I think it, it looks like the guards weren't doing a lot when there was nobody swimming in the pool. Or if there's one adult swimming, I don't need eight guards out there, you know. So if anybody walked in, it looked like seven people are sitting around watching one person work. And I, I don't like that.
Obviously, there's nothing to do.
Right.
If you, if the pool is open for adult swim for that hour, and if one adult shows up, there's nothing you can do about those.
Right.
Sitting there because they're sitting there waiting for the next point they have to be there, so.
And to be ready in case another.
I understand, I understand where he comes from. You catch flack about it.
Right.
That's just weird, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
That's weird, we're gonna operate food.
I did have a, a possible mix of the two, um, to where maybe Tuesday through Friday, we just do adult swim six to seven and one party. And then on Saturday, Sunday, maybe do it six to eight and the eight to ten and kinda do a, a mesh of the two schedules. Um, and just not offer adult swim on the weekends and see, you know, that's when people want any parties.
Ah, man, that's, that's good.
Do we have to have adult swim on a day?
No, I don't, I don't think so. That's not.
Could you just do two, three days a week?
A time, a day, a time, maybe two to three days.
Two to three.
Um, to have adult swim, not five days a week.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and maybe the, you know, um, like I was saying, we could do Tuesday through Friday, do adult swim and Saturday, Sunday, we know more. You know, run a little bit longer, have these schedules. You do kinda the mix of the two.
I think so because.
Does that sound okay, Mike?
Obviously.
Mr. Reddick.
What you're saying is sometimes they're two and sometimes they're one, sometimes it's done.
Yeah.
You can make it available on certain days.
On certain days and publicize that.
They don't, or if they have the opportunity to come.
Well, I will put that combo schedule together and.
Yeah, put that schedule together so that we can post it on our website or on Facebook as well, so the public can, can now do that.
Okay. I think that should hear everything on the panels. Oh, movie night? Oh, yeah. Family night will be on Tuesday still. Tea night on Thursday still. Um, and those would both be seven to nine since we're gonna defer to that adult swim from six to seven. Okay. Um, last year, I think it did some movies down at the pool. Um, I have no idea how that went over. We actually weren't in town for either movie that they did. Um, I know, um, I talked to Jeff Smith because I think he used the equipment also to do the movies at, I don't know, Walmart or wherever they did the, or maybe at the, um.
Yeah, in Walmart, it's a report that you use out there.
So, um, cause I think we did those, I think the city did movies.
If I, excuse me.
No, but.
I'd like to recall that the first movie night they had, it was overloading. It was a law response. After that, I think it's going to law. So I don't know, maybe.
Wasn't there a question about legality of us doing that movie?
There, yeah, you have to be real careful. Now, if they're not paying or.
It's different.
But if they are paying to, to watch it, then you get into some pretty big, I mean, there are some other things, even if they're not paying, you're really not supposed to. It's the copyright rules. Um.
That's where the hood goes. We were last year, we say we're not willing to pay the fee to get the film.
Oh, the license fee?
The copyright.
Oh, gosh.
They weren't willing. And that can't do that, that's illegal.
It definitely is, yeah. Okay. So is that, I mean, if, if we bought that equipment to be used to do pool movies, then I hate to have that equipment sitting around doing nothing. And I don't know if y'all even know if that's, do you know if that gate wasn't purchased specifically for that?
Yep.
Um, so I mean, if that's something y'all want me to dig into, figure out what we can show legally versus here's what we're gonna pay to, to do a show, you know. I don't want anyone looking into that. Um, and we can talk about that for later in the summer.
Some things are probably go by.
Right.
That they don't have any copyright hold to them, but then, and you've got that bunch of, there are and, and, you know, some guys say, well, we don't know what we're gonna do. So we catch the right guy and send them, well, my calls flag.
Right.
And you got trouble.
I mean, you get one person and, I mean, I know when, when both the, like Walmart showed them on their wall, a couple of years ago, I went to the courthouse, we, several years ago, people did movies there and then pulled them. I know because I deal with copyright a lot in music and theaters, uh, that was my first question. Did they get rights to those movies? Cause I mean, you would think they wouldn't attack a small town, but you get one person in a small town that's not happy with how something's going. That's a pretty easy target to, to jump on and it's easy to find out. So, um, I will look into that and, and send something for Donnie to talk to y'all about and let you know.
In fact, I know where part of that equipment is, but where is the detector and all that? I know.
It's in there. Well, no, like, I mean, you can do public domain like cartoons and things like that that are in public domain and you can do that anytime you want, you know. Um, but I will, I'll look into that and, and send Donnie information on that before we schedule anything. Um, prices, um, forever it's been two dollars. Do y'all want to leave it there? Um. I think, you know, a bill plus fifty. I mean, I, I think that in a normal situation, I'd say go up to three dollars at least. But I know that our city's been hit harder with these last several months. And I think that our whole purpose in opening this year is, get something maybe normal in their life, you know what I mean? But it, it's totally up to you guys, whatever y'all wanna do, if you wanna keep it to the level.
We tried going up on here and making to a fifth.
Okay.
So I think it would be good.
For now, for now, you said.
For now.
Going to fifth, I'm.
Yeah, over a dollar. Um, now I think if you made a five dollar change, you could still have a hassle. Um, family pass, I believe was a hundred dollars.
Yes.
Last year. Um, now granted that when we created the family pass, it was based on, um, the amount of days we were open for the total summer, including family night, tea night. Um, if anytime it was open, that family pass worked, you know. Um, we are two weeks, three weeks past, by the time we open, we'll be three weeks past when the normal time would be. I don't know if we must stick with a hundred or drop that down and, uh, and what y'all wants to do about that.
I still, I think they're still gonna get a bargain because it's good for five people, right?
Right. Yes, you get, you, you get five people on your pass, so. And then ask that I can pay, I'd say you have a family of five and then you have a friend that comes with you and pay a dollar for the friend, so.
So maybe to offset the fact that we're a little bit.
Just leave it on.
Ask, say that, well, or say, if you say you could bring a friend and we don't have to charge for bigger than fifty friends, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I.
I'd say leave a lot of money because, I mean, you know, even if two dollars a piece, that's ten dollars for a tie. I think they don't bring anybody extra, that's ten trips to the pool.
Yeah.
So even if they go over once a week.
Yep.
You know, it's still.
Yeah, it's still a part of it.
I'd say we could have this too. That's fine. These are just things I wanted to check so that when, when people ask me, I'll be like, no, I met the city council and we decided so. Um, parties, um, to my knowledge were a hundred dollars for twenty-five people and then two dollars for eighty-one above those twenty-five. Leave it at that. And the way that, I don't have any idea what they did last year, but what I did was if their name was not on our books until they brought me a deposit. I don't care if that deposit's ten bucks or if it's the whole hundred, I don't care. But you gotta bring something that gets your name on the books. That way it's a paying person that has committed to that date. I found we had a lot more successful people sticking to their, they can't respond, say, hey, we're gonna have a party on the eighth, we put us down and then, nothing, you know. Um, I learned that lesson.
I would say half of it, right? Half up front.
Do half.
Half up front to be scheduled and then the remaining half at party.
Sounds good.
But apparently each quarter, if they, if they take ten dollars for a hundred dollars, they just.
Yeah, a month is ten dollars.
And on that, I did, if they were a no-show, obviously they didn't get their deposit back. Um, if, and this is something that we just kinda talked about real quick, if we have to cancel because of weather, um, obviously if they reschedule, it just carries over. But if we have to cancel and they, because of weather and they can't reschedule, like a family reunion type thing, um, do we wanna return their deposit to them or is it still kept?
Yeah, if we cancel it.
Uh, that's what I felt like, I mean, even though it's.
If we cancel for whatever reason, maybe you can.
Okay, that's what I kinda felt like, but I definitely wanted to make sure we're on the same page there. Um, things coming up that I know of, the hotter than hell cook-off, is that considered our July four celebration in the park? That's the same thing? There's not two separate events?
One of the dangerous events up down there.
Okay, okay. So during that, do you all know what?
I think they won't be cool for Friday.
For Friday? And is it, um.
It's free admission.
It's free admission? Okay. Are they blocking off like from the top of the hill or like right there at the pool or anything? Nothing? It's just free admission to the pool? Okay.
On that, so what is that, the twenty-sixth?
It's free admission to the pool up to the number of people that's allowed to be in there.
Sure, yes, absolutely. Yep. And that leaving the twenty-sixth, the twenty-sixth? Yes, okay. So just on Friday, not Saturday? Is that? Okay. Um, are there any other events like that that I need to make sure I get? I don't, cause I will make sure our guard is really heavy on that and stuff. Okay, very good. I think that's that. Concession stand, um, last year they did a lot of twenty-five cent and fifty cent items. Um, the last, the three years I did it, um, I did a dollar for drinks. We did off-brand drinks. Candy dollar, chips, two for a dollar, that'd be the only thing, we do quarters. Ice cream, two dollars, snow cones, a dollar, pickles, a dollar, hot buckets, two dollars. Um, I like those zeros at the end. It makes change easy and it makes turn and then money to go, matches it. And I'm gonna get with the Connie out of Walmart. Donnie talked to her. She thinks she can order us the bold stuff so you don't have to be going over to Sam's to get things. And so that would really help with process of stuff.
And keep our skill sets in balance, yeah.
Um.
I'll have those along with the.
Okay. I mean, I wanna keep it cheap enough that the kids stay hydrated and things, but I don't wanna do a twenty-five cent, I'm not doing a big pop. I'm not doing the big pops to the twenty-five cents and that's ridiculous to deal with quarters.
Do you sell like little arm floating or swim diapers?
They do. I do have swim diapers down there. Um, I need to check and see because they may be the same ones that were there when I started. Um, we may need to just get a box. Um, I don't sell the arm floaties. Um, I always required that they have to be a Chris Hard approved floating device. Um, and we offer, we've got life jackets, we've got the little ones that kind of cross their chest. And we've got them all the way up to people that weigh two hundred pounds. And then we've got.
So they do.
Life jacket. Um.
These life jackets, I mean, are they up to?
We, no, we don't rent them at all. We just provide them. Yeah, we're just providing them. And also if it's someone that my guards are not comfortable in the pool, um, I make them put a life jacket on them and they can leave because we're not the one with it. And it really has not been a problem. Most parents are just happy that we recognize they don't have a great summer. You need to stay in the shallow and if you want to come over here, then you need to put the life jacket on and they're, you know, I don't have any problem with that. Um, I think they did try to charge for life jackets the year before I started this job. Um, the problem is the guy that did that actually pocketed the cash from it and so that was.
I'm not gonna contribute. I was just asking for my information.
Yeah, for sure. And, and I do, I did go through them. Um, that's first thing I did was check our life jacket supply. Um, I only had one that I had to throw away that the interior was kind of up to centering. So I think we'll do this summer. Next time we probably need to, you know, add a couple and get rid of a couple.
Maybe that we're looking in our budget and everything, maybe we can put in the budget to replace or invite our jackets and stuff as we go.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to have something.
You really honestly should get two of each age, I mean, each, uh, weight probably. Group to me, two a year and get where they're all at as two. You know what I mean? And just keep them on a regular.
People.
So.
Put in a drink.
Yes.
We have a plan out and the.
For that. Yeah, I think that's a, well, and that goes along with your lifeguard supplies as well. Their flotation, those red tubes that are their saving tubes. Those have to be replaced, not every year by weeds, but you know, and I checked those, they're all, none of them have holes. They're all doing what they're supposed to do. Tracks are good and all that. So.
But again, that's an area to work as a group manager and you can look into it if you see a need for it.
Then, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
You have to have thought.
To do.
Play.
Yeah. Yeah. Generally I either call up here and tell Donnie to, how do I get this for? Well, it was poor. But I don't know who does the ordering these days up here.
He's in the air channel.
Okay. Okay. So we'll make sure we deal with that as, as we come to it. Um, discipline, um, I had a flip chart in place when I did this and I kept a little notepad. Um, you know, there's minor offenses, they're just daily. If the guards have to constantly be yelling out from the running and, you know, just that little stuff. Um, they get three fences in a day, they're out the rest of the day. Um, if, if they do that consistently, um, if they keep getting those small things, then they go over into major offenses. The major offenses, um, last time they'd be gone for a day plus the next day. Um, if they got another major fence, it'd be a full week. And if they got a third major fence, it'd be the rest of the season. Um, obviously major things would be drugs, alcohol, sexual misconduct, um, things like that, you know, stealing, um, major, major things. It doesn't happen often, but if you don't have something in place and something happens, then it's a lot quicker to make that rule today, you know?
We will include the pen. We will not.
I did.
Paying the penalty for anybody who is that.
Yes, I have that on, um, my list and, um, it's also my lifeguard rules and, um, management rules. And we actually already talked about that. I mean, I was the first one we talked about when they came onsite this week. Um, and we have a full meeting at noon today to, to really go through every single rule for book management and guards. So. Um, but we need to be doing what I, what we expect our patrons to do and, um, and so that's definitely in there. That's a big thing for me. It's a real big thing. That and the bathing onsite and smoking onsite, things like that, and sexual misconduct, those things really get on the skin. So. Um, lightning safety, there's not a specific anymore that I can find on Red Cross, U I L, anything. Everyone is going by the, um, when you see the lightning, count how long it is till you hear the thunder. And if it's less than thirty seconds in between, then you clear for thirty minutes or until you hear the last clap of thunder. Um, and so unless you all want to set a specific mileage from the water for a lightning strike, then we'll follow that, you know, inside that.
Didn't we buy that in St. Louis last year?
We bought it the first year that I was on, um, and it was a, um, ten mile radius on, on lightning was the suggested. Um, because lightning can hit from, you know, so far out. So, um. I'm, I'm fine with that. It does just something again. I like for us to all be on the same page on. If we want to make it a mileage thing, we can do that. It makes it easy. Um, because we can use that meter. If we want to make it, um, the guideline of if it's under thirty seconds from lightning to thunder, then we're out. Um, and on both of those, the only person that makes that call is the manager on duty. Um, you run into problems when every kid's phone app is saying a different mileage and every person that comes in the pool is the one that says twenty-five miles. Why did yours say, well, I don't know if I'm the manager. So.
Yeah, um, I'm the one that this comes to if there's a problem. And so you might just kind of want to know which direction to go on that.
Still have it.
I just rely on the equipment. Cause I mean, that's what they do at football games. Anything that you I L, they use that equipment that the coach has.
Right.
Be able to determine on what the distance is. If, if you were standing on the ground or standing pulling a metal pipe into the ground, that might be a long way away.
Yes.
It still gets you, but with the safety guidelines that are in place with those meters, I mean, they're pretty accurate.
Yeah, they are. Well, and it was saying to clear the area.
Right.
When it determines that lightning is too close.
Right.
So just use it as our guide.
No, thanks. Yes.
All right. Um, COVID safety, um, there, I looked at CDC for home of pools. There's just some general, there's nothing that says you have to, have to, have to, have to on cleaning and stuff. There are some suggested things like wiping down commonly used things like the handrails, the slide, the lifeguard chairs, um, the chairs that the patrons sit in. Um, spread out your chairs and tables to encourage social distancing, that kind of stuff. So we've got some spray laws. Like we have, um, rubbing alcohol, the, the hand sanitizer mix in. That we're going to use to just kind of wipe down regularly. Um, as far as members in the pool, Sam will be the person on that. Okay. Um, cause he knows the formula. Um. Other than that, I was thinking, do you guys specifically want me, we've got hand sanitizer we're gonna have down there so that if people want it, they can use it. As far as the life jackets go, I feel like after they didn't use that day, we put them behind the counter, sanitize and let them sit overnight so they start again the next day kind of system. Something I thought on that. Anything else y'all would specifically?
On about the, for, like when your clothes, shoes and so forth in the baskets.
Yeah, I've, I've been toying around with what to do about that. Um, so do you tell them that they have to take their stuff out, which inevitably they're just gonna pile them up a big pile? You know, when a group of kids comes in together or do we go ahead and put them in baskets even though they're side by side? Um, we can just, we can spread out where things go in the baskets, you know what I mean? And not put different groups of people side by side. I mean, we can do some of that. Um, and then spray on the baskets overnight, you know, that kind of, every between users. Um, yeah, I've been kind of thinking about that. If we don't use the baskets, I think the kids are just gonna, you know, a group of girls comes in together, they're just gonna pile all their stuff in one giant pile. You know, but then I guess it's on them, not us. Um.
I'm glad you said that they get through the, the patient on that far.
Now, I don't want to take the baskets out to the pool area. I think it can stay in the whole house, you know, so we can definitely clean the baskets and just use some separation there, I think.
Is there any need for, uh, dispensers or subforces that are coming out of the showers when they're getting through or, or is that, you don't hold it over?
I, I mean. My personal opinion is if we're gonna open a public pool, kids are gonna be on top of each other in the pool. Whether we sanitize and come in to the pool area or not. You know what I'm saying? Um, it, it's a little, there's a little bit apprehension that goes with just opening this kind of facility because people are not gonna stay off of people in a pool. They're gonna play, they're gonna touch handrails, they're gonna, I mean. Um, I think that I would just say take every safety precaution that you know.
Yeah.
And that you read on the CDC website and then just. It just says to have hand sanitizer or cleaning stations available and encourage usage. So I already talked to the guards this morning about, um. They're, we're gonna write out a script and record it and have a play system for it regularly reminding of cleanliness and the basic rules for pool, that kind of stuff. Um, we did that the other three years that I was there. Um, not that people necessarily listen to it, to it. But when they came in and had a problem, we've been announcing, we've outlayed this. You've been told, you know, that kind of stuff. So. And CDC does recommend that you have some kind of announcement line regularly to remind them to stay clean. So I think if we have hand sanitizer available, that's probably about the best we can do, you know?
Right. Yeah.
So.
They don't use, they don't.
Yep.
Go where it's at.
Um, the restaurants on the outside of the pool house. Um, I've had already just in the forties, I've been down there, a bunch of people come in and get frustrated, can we use yours? That kind of stuff. Um. So I don't, I don't know what the expectation is of, of who needs to be keeping up with that. Um, I did before on the weekends. I called and I come worked out. They did the week and then during the weekend when it was getting traffic and they're not on duty, then my guards would spray down, make sure it's full of paper. That kind of stuff. Um, I just kind of wanted to make you all aware more than anything of those questions are coming to me. So we'll, we'll look into that. I don't know. They're, they're not great parties. Y'all been down there? Anyway, I don't know what to do about it, but it, it gets pretty disgusting in there and so kind of, we'll look into that. Um, dumpsters, it's not very made out park anymore. Is there, I mean, like we're getting some additional.
Okay, great.
Like for the little.
Uh, well, originally we were thinking just until the hotter than hell is over with, but if you need them, uh, we can continue and we can leave them there. So we just kind of play it by ear and say that we need them still.
Sure. If the, um, if those are full, like today I already noticed that the, the one by the pool is, it's already overflowing. Um, I didn't, there's like one down at the building, but where do we haul to? Is there a, a location or just take it to the closest alley and find a dumpster? I mean, like if those are full, cause I don't want them on the launch.
Can you maybe send your headers?
I mean, it's.
Oh, just three in the back.
There's like.
Yeah.
Three in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, I think there's three.
Okay. Then that'll be, I just wanted to make sure I have backup plan for it there for, so I want to.
We'll make sure and get extra ones over there as quickly as possible. Yeah.
Um, the next thing is, and, and I don't know if you guys have a opinion on this or not. Um, how old a kid has to be to swim by themselves at the pool with, without an adult or a, a person old enough to care for them? Um, there's not a, that's the hard thing about pools in general. There are not specific federal guidelines or state guidelines for anything. You know, you just kind of have to decide what system are you gonna go with? Are you going to go for a cross? You're gonna go with, there's several things. From what I can tell, some, some people say five and under, I think that's way too young. Um, some people say eight and under, some say ten and under. Um, ten and under or twelve and under. There, yeah, I mean, I found when I was looking at this, trying to, to see if Red Cross had any specific, they don't even, they just say no student swim or no, no swimmer that is not a competent swimmer. That's all they say. Um, I kind of like there to be an age if, you know. You know, I guess there are people that do that, um, who's now, according to that, I mean, along with that, I don't mind having younger swimmers if they pass a swim test. You know what I mean?
That's what I was saying. How do you tell whether they're competent swimmers?
And I, I mean, I always did swim tests on, whether they had a parent with them or not. I didn't think they were competent swimmer. I made them pass a swim test for me. Um, because I need my guards to know that this kid can't swim in the deep end, you know, even though their parent says they can. But their parent's not gonna allow them with them and they're gonna sit over on that lounger and I gotta let that kid say, you know? Um, and so I don't know, I kind of feel like maybe eight, eight years.
Of course.
Would be okay. Um, if they're younger than that, like if they're just turning eight or something, you know, pass a swim test for me. Um, I need them to take care of themselves if they're sick or if they, I mean, not, not just in pool stuff, you know? Um, so, um, I don't know. I think that's, I think in this community could say a long younger.
I think, I think it's eight, younger than. That's why I'm with them. And eight, from eight and under, if they're, if you have a problem, they can pass this, we can test them and you'll have.
Yep.
You go confident with that eight year old?
I do. I feel good about that. And if, and, and on the other side of that, if it's a kid that's ten and they're not swimming well, I'm gonna make them pass a swim test or stay in the shallow. I mean, I will do that. That's, that's.
Or wear a life jacket.
Or wear a life jacket, right? Um, I don't allow on the diving board in life jackets. Um, parties are different, you know, private parties, I do handle that different. I'm letting their private parties, but it's too much to be watching those non-swimmers in the bulk of the swim hours. Um, and I have to come out early and make calls with that. Um, I do want to order updated Red Cross manuals, if that's all right with y'all, one we put in. There's a few swim lifeguard things that we need to get ordered. Um.
Very different.
But I would like, the one I have, the, it's from, it was the most recent when I took over and that was, two thousand and ten was the most recent manual when I took over. Um, but I know they've updated since then. So I'd like to have physical copy. It's just easier when it's a simple question, it's not hard to flip into that manual.
Get it updated.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry that was so long. That's what I've got.
I appreciate that. I appreciate you coming and giving us this information. That is very exciting. We've ever had. At least to my knowledge, you've covered so many things that I really hadn't even thought. I just want to appreciate it very much.
Well, I basically, when I took this over, went through and thought about everything that concerned me as a parent sitting in there. And that's how I decided what to start writing stuff for. So. All right. Well, I'll update everything we talked about and then I'll just send you a copy of it to get to everybody else. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Sam, you're finally.
Okay.
Did you fall asleep?
He's ready for lunch now.
Yeah, go.
I think I am too.
Wake up.
I'll wait for my phone to.
You go ahead and start if you want.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you, thank you.
Good morning.
Uh, real quick, I will get upon what Janet, the point to be on. As far as the calculation formula for the pool, you have to do a formula that is stated by the state as far as how many people you can have in a pool at any time. I thought that there was going to be a different formula for COVID, but after Pat consented to, it ends up being the same standard formula. So we had already type there our pool a couple of years ago and so very, very easily I can tell you what the shallow wind can handle. Which is crazy. Because we've never hit the snow. But just because the size of our pool and because we've been blessed with such a nice pool, just in the shallow wind, we can have a four hundred and eighty swim. Legal. We can have a four hundred.
I acknowledge general league.
That's talking about.
Everything in the larger part of the pool.
That long strip going forward. Four hundred eighty-seven.
Four hundred eighty.
Eighty.
Yes. By the formula, by this day. Basically, my calculation is the pool is a hundred and twenty foot long, it's sixty foot wide. Okay? And then seven two hundred, you divide it by fifteen square foot per diver, diver's order. Okay? That's just your shell. The deep end, basically you have to do a totally different calculation. So I divided both of the, both are divided into. So the part where the diving boards isn't at can handle thirty-two people. The deep end alone, when you have divers, you round down. So it goes to two. So basically you can come out to five hundred and fourteen swimmers in the pool. Okay? And because of COVID, we're going to have to cut that in half. So that still puts us at two hundred and fifty-seven bait in the pool. So that still puts us at two hundred fifty-seven bather in the pool. And our highest, I think, depth was two twenty-five, something like that. The most we've ever had in the pool at two twenty-five. Now, in addition to that, Pat said, in the door. So this is a calculation that says what we can have in the pool, but with COVID, it's in-house. So anybody that comes in the front door, so not just baters, it's going to have to be anybody, mom or dad, aunt, uncle.
Including guards, managers, everybody.
Everybody, everybody.
The two hundred seventy.
Two fifty-seven is going to be ours.
It's going to include everyone.
Everybody, in the door. All managers, all on site, everybody there. So five in there, five there, whoever's there, yes. But I think we're still good. Because I don't think we've ever hit that.
And, and I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we'll have to, we'll just be keeping a notebook, a tab of people in, and then a tab of people out, you know what I mean? We're going to have to figure that out at the counter, but.
Good. All right. I will not, well, I should have said this, I was going to say, I was going to talk to someone, Janet.
Sorry.
Y'all could ask me questions. You can add a lot more detail. And just so you know, we're a team. She got called, I got called, we got together, and this is the sentence I told Miss Seymour is, uh, we're doing this together, we won't do it individually, okay? Y'all fair with that, we go with that? Because we work a team and we work together then. We did.
Nobody can do it if you don't do it.
You what?
Nobody can do it if you don't do it.
I'm going to say, oh, honey.
No, you have to speak your voice.
True, I guess others have mine.
There's no house that does that we're aware of.
Correct. I had a funny.
So thank you for your willingness to do this. I know that it was probably somewhat of a challenge, so thank you very much for serving our community.
And, and I said this, and I said it to Janet, Janet Allen, my wife and I, we all came to the same agreement, the first words out of her mouth was, if we're not going to do it, we have to do it for the kids.
Thank you.
That's the reason.
We do appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, I only have two seats here, I'm going to give each of you all one. And what I did was, Mr. Morrison called me, stated the fact, hey, we just wanted to there, you wanted my license, you wanted my note, my knowledge, I really wanted to put it, however, as far as the CPO, I don't have to be on-site all the time, but I do have to be on-call during peak season. Peak season in, in my world during this time of year is May through September. We normally start treating pools in April, May, so we're behind the curve. I've already been to the pool pretty much every day, in the mornings, in the evenings, monitoring the chemicals, trying to see where we are, trying to get it up and ready. Hopefully, my, her open date, and I'm not going to say that. So what I did was, I basically pulled, yes, I use Google, so I'm, uh, information as far as CPO salaries across the country, and then at the bottom, you will see my, my fees as far as what I charge per hour, and I did this based off ten hours a week, okay? So I'm only charging for two hours a day. And on the weekends, Claude, American wrote it, so I won't be there, but every other week. So there's five weekends out of the ten weeks that we have listed right now as far as open time. So I listed sixteen hours for the five weekends that I work. I would be there more during that time because basically I have to stay on the chemicals, keeping everything up, and doing their readings there yet, okay? So. Yes, sir, yes, sir? And in talking to Pat, I had stated the fact that you're asking me to do this, what we are feeding, what we're doing, he said at this time, no, under fifty thousand, give us a small contract, throw it together, we'll look over it, agree upon it, something like that. Is that the same as y'all? I just trying to make sure everybody's on board. Yes, no? You're being quiet. And basically, everything that I've said is just for, basically, in one agreement, and I did not send it to Pat this morning, but I will get it sent to him. And I work closely with Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Wilson works closely with me, we basically keep in contact as far as what the pool's doing, where we are, where the teams are. She tells me what parties are going to have, because basically, if you have high water temperature, triple-digit days, and a lot of swimmers, you have to practically stay on top of your chemicals almost every hour, two hours. It can change on you that quick. Being that that's a large pool, you can't get it to respond as quick. When I went into the pool Friday evening, the system had gone into an alarm safety lock, so we were feeding nothing at that time. So I basically had to do a reboot and reset on the system. Saturday morning, we were up, Saturday evening, we were up. By yesterday afternoon, we were getting close to our mid-range. Yes. By Saturday evening, or Sunday evening, we were at mid-range, and then as of this morning, about nine-thirty, we were ten points from where we needed to be. And as Ms. Wilson had already explained, we do have some spots, some algae spots and things. It's not a virus-type algae, it's basically a black algae that's a nuisance. So if y'all are in agreement and both says it's okay financial-wise, I'd like to visit with Aqua Threat as far as something to attack that in short period of time, as well as work on some of the stains that are throughout the pool that are deeper and darker than they have in the past.
Just as a one-time thing, you think, possibly?
Well, I hope it's a one-time thing as far as just trying to get it. They have, if he doesn't have anything, and he says, hey, it's not going to do anything, then we're going to say no. If it's something that we can test and it's going to work, and we can clarify, because all it does, my big thing is y'all, water can be legal, but for her and her staff and safety, it has to be illegal. We have to be able to see. And so far, I cannot see from the chem shed to the deep end through the water. That's huge to me, because if you have guards in certain areas on the pool, they need to be able not just to see their section, but they need to see the other sections in overlap and help each other. What questions?
How much, how much of the, the pool, bottom here, everything is stained from leaves and stuff like that?
How much of it is on that?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the pool is not here before winter, it's full of leaves.
Correct.
It's stained, and.
Correct.
I'm speaking from experience.
Yeah. Well, that's the first question that I asked when we met with Mia last week was, I walked up to the bar, I said, so when did we start this? A few days ago? And I said, so when did you start killing? Uh, yesterday? And I said, that doesn't work. That's, that's a way short, because you can't.
Different information than we received, so.
Okay. But, and, and I've always stressed it, I take care of all the pools that I take care of year-round. I don't kill them all year-round, but I do try to keep the junk out of them year-round, because that is a vegetation that has acidic reaction, and when it settles and it sets, it's going to stain. And, I mean, I love our parks, I'm going to be wrong, but when you get a lot of concrete dumped at certain times of the year, it's going to have a certain type of vegetation acidic in it, that's going to cause that. There's cleaners that do it, there's things that happen, but really, it comes down to, and I say this all the time with my customers as well, it's not hard, it just takes a little bit of maintenance and that. And if you do it periodically, it's a whole lot easier than if you just get slammed and have to take care of it all at once.
Uh, what was you saying, don't let the leaves stay down?
Yes.
Yeah, because basically, that just piles up into, and the other side that we're going to have to battle right now is, because of what she's seen as far as the black algae and what we're noticing in the pool, that's not just on the pool or on the sides where you can see it, it's in our drains, it's in the pipes, it's now we're just way into the filtration system. So now we have to fight it not just in the pool, we have to fight it through the system.
And it is important, I mean, it's not like we can't swim in it with that. When I did this the first year, the, the far end of the shallow, like the whole thing was covered in giant spots of this black algae. And we got the bulk of it off before we opened, but literally, the whole season, the guards use those metal brush heads, and it just takes constant scrubbing on them. They're not going to, they're not going to hurt you, but they do make the floor nasty, you know, and become a problem over time. So that's what we've, we've already spent probably six solid hours scrubbing spots. There's quite a few larger brown areas where you can tell that leaves have settled and sat, you know, for an extended amount of time, that kind of thing, that we're scrubbing on.
But a lot of the staining in the bottom of the pool and everything is kind of contributed to the fact that you can't see through the water.
Correct. Well, instead of having your, your white plaster, your light blue plaster, you're seeing a brown. So that brown hits a reflection, you have your sun, so you're seeing a dark area rather than a reflective.
The water could be in good shape, you're just not being able to see it because it's stained.
Right. I'm, I'm not going to allow the staining to make our decision, but the staining does affect the clarity.
Right.
You know, if we get the water clean, we get it crystal, we get it going, and we can see across it. In the past, we've had it where you put a penny on our eye at the far end of the pool, from the chem shed at the front door, you could actually look across the pool and see. That's the clarity that we're shooting.
I understand about getting in the pipe and the filter, bringing a bit in there, doesn't have a hundred percent for it, well, it's easy to have.
Yes. And once it was in there cycling like that all that time, then it's, it's in the system. So like I said, it's, it's not, it's, it's a double battle, trying to work with filtration. Being a short period and trying to get the chemicals up is a challenge. The challenge right now is our water's already getting ninety degrees, and we have triple-digits coming this next couple of weeks. So when you start hitting your triple-digits anytime, you start hitting your eighty, ninety degree of height, and you have water temperatures of ninety degrees, we're in a bind. Just to keep it holding at a legal limit, just to keep the kids out of the water. Okay? You have a question? Y'all already went out there, did?
We did not, we're set.
Hey.
I mean, can you not talk about official open dates?
Yes.
I mean, he and I have very high hopes of it being very quick.
I have very high hopes.
Next week?
Yeah, I mean.
Next week?
As soon as you guys have it ready, and, oh, that's what I'm thinking. Everyone else, what's your thought?
I mean, good.
I, as soon as it's ready.
Safety and cleanliness is a host, so I wonder how y'all feel, like, is, is oil.
I just didn't want it to be a shock to y'all if you're like, what, pool's open? You know what I mean? But if y'all are okay with us making that decision as soon as cans and all that kind of stuff where they need to be.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just let us know.
Sure.
So that we can make an announcement on, on our sites, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
Good? Okay.
I guess.
So.
So, what are you going to say? Next week?
What are you, what are you thinking?
We want to get through today and maybe in the morning, but we're really, we're trying not to, related to October, but you still want, right?
Yeah, I think. Shooting for Friday.
Shooting for Friday.
Which is the twelve.
This is the seven, that's all I know.
Eight.
So, yeah, that's right.
That's what we're, shooting is what we're shooting for.
I was going to shoot before, as long as we can get the pool to respond to what we're doing to the next couple of weeks.
There'll be calling.
Yeah.
They've already driven up, and they've already passed the door.
Lots of people coming. Crazy, just since our last city council.
Yes. We've had so many people in the door. Are you open today? Are you open today? When are you opening up?
So, you said you had a question?
I guess my question is, no, we need to make it to say hit on accepting itself.
Right.
Oh, that's very nice.
It sounded like none of the salaries really went up except Clarissa's, right?
Yeah, every, yeah. First is the only one, it was a fifty cent raise. I really don't know why she didn't get a twenty-five cent raise like the others last year.
Yeah. And then you, if we decided to take you to hourly, then you were, you were going to be at fourteen-fifty an hour. And then with Sam's.
And Rochelle.
And Rochelle, Rochelle was at?
She was at thirteen last year.
Fifty, oh, so she went up by fifty cents?
I put her at fifty cents just because of that.
So two people went up by fifty cents. And that's really the only change besides you going to hourly.
Right.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm good with the, with the salaries. What say you two?
Yes.
Yes.
But do I have a motion to accept them, the salaries?
I've entered in a motion to accept the salary that's presented for the pool managers, CPO, and life managers.
Say.
I'll second.